Can we please take our seats so we can begin the meeting?
Shut it down.
No, that's fine.
Let me see, um...
That's the elder county judge.
I like New Vision.
Got some of my...
This is ridiculous.
From there.
Good evening and welcome to our regular board meeting. We are going to have the invocation this evening by elder county judge of New Vision Christian Church in Forest Park, be followed by the pledge of allegiance if you would. Stand with me.
Correction, Elder Connie Johnson. I would not want that man over there to divorce me being judge.
All right, Madam Clerk, we gotta have a talk.
Yes, sir.
On behalf of New Vision Christian Church and my pastor, Dr. Luke Hall, it's a pleasure to come out and just to be here for what's being hap... what's going on here in Clayton County. And certainly, we know that all of our counties, cities, and state need much prayer. Amen? And so, let's just go to God in prayer. Our Father and our God, we thank you so much for this time and for this opportunity. Your word declared, "If any man lack wisdom, let him acts of God who gives it liberally and upbraitheth not." Your word further declared, "If a good man's steps are ordered by the Lord." This afternoon, Father, we need you to order the steps of every person who represents any governing body in Clayton County. Not only Clayton County, but every county that's represented in the metroplex area. Our world is in trouble. Our counties are in trouble. And we need you, Father, to lead and guide those who represent us in leadership. Lead them by your mighty power and by your hand. Father, your word even declared in Psalms 24 that you call for those who would operate with clean hands and a heart of integrity. Now, we set before you people who we declare and decree must operate by that principle, with clean hands and a heart of integrity. We speak now to this meeting that there be no confusion, but there will be peace, peace in this place. Those who have come with an agenda that is not pleasing in your sight, we will not receive it. Every agenda that is set before us must be righteous. And so, we thank you, Lord, for your righteousness and for your glory. Now bless this governing body and bless the people of Clayton County, for fairness and justice must prevail in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the August 16, 2016 Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Before doing so, does any member have any amendments? Hearing non-may, we have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Probably move in second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose. Is unanimous?
Approval of the August 2, 2016 Regular Business Meeting and the 6:30 PM public hearing on the proposed FY 2017 military rate increase.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve both the Regular Business Meeting minutes from 7 o'clock and the public hearing minutes from 6:30 PM.
Second.
Probably move in the second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna extend from the 6:30 public hearing.
One abstention for the 6:30, she was not present. And the four, which one is that?
We hadn't got to it, 11 AM.
Okay. Four, one vote. Did we do a vote on it? Did we take a vote on it? Yeah?
Yeah, we hadn't done the public hearing from 11 AM.
Okay, the year.
It's four, it passed four, one. One abstention.
I'm sorry, and also the August 2, 11 AM.
We hadn't, we hadn't.
We haven't got that one.
Okay, got it. The next is the August 2, 2016, 11 o'clock AM, public hearing.
Is there a motion?
Show moved.
Is there a second?
No second, Mr. Chair.
Probably move in second.
I'm sorry, I wasn't here, I'm sorry. Forgive me.
Probably move in second by Commissioner Hambrik, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, on this one, we need two abstentions.
Say again, Madam Clerk.
We need two extemp...
Two extensions and...
Yes.
Vote was unanimous.
The board will now hear a public comment. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we do have citizens that have signed up to speak before the board.
Dr. Henry Anderson.
Henry Anderson, unincorporated Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia. Good evening. Your evaluations continue in your second series of evaluations in the area of code enforcement, and your role as our Clayton County Board of Commissioners in this in upholding and executing your powers, authority, command, control, and governance, and powers, and duties, and responsibilities that we, the citizens of Clayton County, gave all five of you when we elected you to work in our best interest and with us in making Clayton County a better livable and most desirable place to live. Because all five of you have failed at this present time to control the numerous rampant and out-of-control code violations of the many businesses, commercial properties, apartment homes, mobile home parks, and non-residential properties in unincorporated Clayton County, and Clayton County's Main Street, Terra Boulevard, and this many other streets with their dirty, trashy, unclean, messy, nasty, clutter-filled, dilapidated, rundown, blighted, deteriorating, and decaying many businesses with their external appearance showing and exhibiting overgrown and trash-filled grass, neglecting to no maintenance of their landscaping, overflowing trash dumpsters that sit in front of their properties for all to see, neglecting to nonexistent basement maintenance and upkeep of their properties, defacement of their properties, and the glut and proliferation of used tire stores all throughout unincorporated Clayton County with no end in sight. All five of you have violated Article 2 that lists your powers and duties as Clayton County Board of Commissioners, specifically Article Section Dash 2-Dash-10, Number 20, that states "You have the power to prohibit or regulate and control the erection and maintenance of buildings, sign fences, billboards, trees, shrubs, and any and all other structures or obstructions upon or adjacent to the rights and ways of the streets and roads within the unincorporated area of said county and to prescribe penalties and punishment for your violations of such ordinances." The glut and proliferation of all used tire stores throughout unincorporated Clayton County fall in this category, and all five of you have failed totally in using your legal authority, control, and put a stop to the runaway and out-of-control proliferation of these used tire stores which has made, in my opinion, Clayton County the unofficial used tire store capital of the metropolitan Atlanta, Georgia geographical area. For your major violation and for your failure to show and execute leadership and direct action in this matter of extreme rampant and out-of-control commercial code violations all throughout unincorporated Clayton County, you are operating at a failure level, and now have your second grade and mark of failure and failing, and your second mark of negative, of negative marks stained, blemished, demerit, and major deficiency on your commission dossier and record for your shameful inactions and lack of out-front leadership in this area. I once had trust, confidence, and assurance that all five of you would get the job done in this area, but I now know better, and no longer have the trust, confidence, assurance, and no longer can depend on all five of you to get the job done in this area. So your evaluations are failure and failing. The citizens of Clayton County who care about this in this area stand. Evaluations will continue at the next Clayton County Board of Commissioners meeting.
Ms. Dr. Anderson, just one thing. Do you know that we have a countywide moratorium in effect that has been in effect for several months?
Yes.
So nobody can build anything?
I'm only talking about the numerous code violations of the businesses. I have been on public comment on, throughout many years, with your predecessor, everybody else. My concern is this, you are the power of this county. You fund the code enforcement department. I have no problems with code enforcement, but I'm talking about you all caring. I have sent emails to Chief Stanford in April about all of the violations. Commissioner Rooks, you haven't responded. I'm your, I'm the commissioner of your district. You have not responded to any of them. None of you have responded to any of them. I'm out front, I just care as a citizen. I have no power, I'm just one vote. But at least I try to care, because this county does not look good. And Chairman Turner, I learned about the broken window theory when I attended the Citizens Police Academy that says when, when people come into this county and they see all of these broken-down buildings and bad-looking properties, they look, they, we look like we don't care in this county, and that attracts more negative citizens, citizens who don't care. So that's all that I'm before you all, to at least care. I have tried and tried and sent you email letters and, and care, and I, I just don't see it. So you, if you reverse course, I will gladly reverse my evaluation, but I have had enough, and I will know, I no longer have the trust, confidence, and assurance at this point in time, but it's fluid and flexible, that it could change if you do better as a commission and start using your power to help this county.
But let me just, in defense of the board, and I know you write so eloquently, but we do get a six, seven-page email, and we, we will send them to Mr. Stanford or whatever department to address it. It is kind of impossible every time to answer the emails in the fashion that you'd like. So I know from our experience, you had an issue with code enforcement. We went out on a ride when I first got here, right? We removed code enforcement, commercial code enforcement, and put it under PD. We have an issue with not having enough officers anywhere. So as a commissioner who cares about what it looks like, aesthetics is important to me, and I know that from the rewrite of zoning is important to all of us. So I know that we don't generally comment after people get up there, but it is, it is somewhat offensive to hear it over and over again when I know that we have done as much as we can when we are fiscally able to do what we can do. And I don't want you to think, or anybody to think, that we don't care about what the county looks like. We talk about it all the time. We're calling, warden, all the time to pick up trash and do this, and we're trying to put money here to do all of these things in the counties. I don't want you or anybody else to think that we don't care about what this county looks like, because we do. And I don't normally comment, but it does get poignant and striking every time we hear, every time I hear it, and, and I don't want anyone to come away with, "I don't care," because I really do. I'm leaving in December, on December 31st, but I won't stop working for Clayton County until then.
Thank you, Doctor. Angela Ramsay.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Angela Ramsay, Account Director for the Public and Labor Division of Etna, and I wanted to say thank you for giving us an opportunity to partner with Clayton County. In addition, I want to thank Commissioner Gail Hambrik and all those involved with the 2016 Back-to-School Bash. As a participant of the event, I saw many children with lots of smiles on their faces as they had backpacks filled with school supplies and received fresh haircuts. I know we were rained out this year a bit, but it was definitely a well-attended event. And at the Etna table, we asked the children to color. You know, in this age of modern technology, kids don't always color. And so, we had the children color specifically as a thank you for Commissioner Hambrik for what she had done. And we also asked them to sign a canvas just to say thank you. So there's a quote from Maya Angelou that says, "I've learned that people will forget what you said. People will forget what you did, but they will never for... I'm sorry. People will forget what you did, but they will never forget the way you made them feel." And I just know, judging by the beautiful faces of so many of the children and the families at the Back-to-School Bash, that they will never forget, and your actions will not be forgotten.
Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Bristol-Reed. Okay, thank you. Orlando Gooden.
Orlando Gooden, Jonesboro, Clayton County. Thank you. Clayton County has the best police department in Georgia. In New York, there are three words painted on the side of police cars: courtesy, professionalism, respect. Those words really describe the Clayton County Police Department, starting with Police Chief Michael Register, Deputy Chief Nina Hawkins, the majors, captains, all the officers, also Officer C. Watkins-Frazier, who runs the Citizens Police Academy, which my wife and I recently attended. Law enforcement is under attack all over this country, from Dallas to New York, Maryland to Baton Rouge, Milwaukee to Georgia. There's a thin line between civility and anarchy, and that line is blue. We need to show Police Chief Register that we support him by giving him the 13 new police officers he needs to keep us safe. Let me ask you, what commissioner could not use three additional officers in their district? In the words of Milwaukee Chief David Clark, "Blue lives matter." Thank you to the Clayton County Police Department, Georgia's finest. For two years, I've been talking about the conditions at the Aquatic Center. Let me apologize, because I could have at least shown you the proof. Bacteria and fungus. Mold and mildew in the shower stalls. Rusted lockers. Un-sanitary floors. This is the nonsense that we've been dealing with for two years. The current interim director believes, "Let's put a Band-Aid on what needs surgery." So we'll put rubber mats over fungus. That doesn't cure the problem. We'll put locks over rusted lockers. That doesn't cure the problem. In the words of Dr. Phil, "You can't put feathers on a dog and call it a chicken." Let me again express my support for Nicole Horn is Director of Parks and Recreation. I believe with this, with your support, you'll be able to clean up this mess and run the department correctly. Ms. Horn is the most knowledgeable and qualified person for the position and would be a great asset to Parks and Recreation. Ms. Horn has two qualities that stand out the most: excellent communication skills and great customer service. If you can put politics aside, then the only choice for Director of Clayton County Parks and Recreation is Nicole Horn. I am asking you to do the right thing. Carpe diem, cease today.
Thank you. Kathy Loving.
Good evening, my name is Kathy Loving, 8311 Taylor Road, and I want to thank my Commissioner Shawna Rooks, and I want to thank you too, Commissioner and Chairman Turner, for the wonderful job you guys are doing. I think everybody else should be put on notice. But I'm here today to talk about, wondering if they're gonna put the briquettes to stop the larvae from growing in the creeks of Clayton County? Like I told you before, one's behind my house, number one. Number two, they said they were gonna move the bus stop. I mentioned I had to pick up all the trash. This week, my Herbie Kirby is half-full already with the trash I picked up in front of my driveway, which included McDonald's, used prophylactics, broken beer bottles. I took pictures in my phone in case anybody wants to see them later. And above everything else, my dog's raising cane this morning, little bitty Italian Greyhound. And I didn't answer the door, because I don't answer my door when I don't know who's coming. All of a sudden, boom, 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 boom on my door. Swag pants hanging off the hips, cigarette in hand. Well, is the bus coming? Do you know when the bus is coming? No, sir, I am not martyr. Now, my house is at least six car lengths down from the hill. That's a problem. I do have a sign on the door that we shoot every third salesman, and the second one just left. I don't want to be the one that shoots the martyr, person waiting on the martyr bus. So, and I appreciate what you guys, what you did, and I appreciate martyr moving the sign, but they moved it directly in front of my driveway. So now the bus is gonna be facing my driveway, and that's what the guy came down to ask me when the bus was coming. Got to get that bus off of Taylor Road. Doesn't belong on Taylor Road, and they told us that it would not be on Taylor Road. It is a problem. And it's a safety problem, not just for me, but for the person that bangs on their door the next time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Griffin.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Griffin. I live at 8314, um, 8413 Hollowbrook Drive. I'm the President of the Wingate Subdivision, and I'm here also about the martyr issue. Last year, when you all first negotiated about the bus routes and everything, it wasn't really supposed to come down Taylor Road. Like five years ago, when it used to come down there, uh, no one really rode the bus and everything. But my, my question, the reason why I'm here is because I spoke with Mr. Jerry Griffin and Don Williams, and I also spoke with, her name is McClendon, I believe.
Rowland.
And on yesterday, they moved the sign. They was gonna move it into our entry of our subdivision, which basically 40% of our, 40 homes are in the Hollowbrook and Taylor Road area. I was there, like I said, yesterday with, I believe his name, Charlie Rose, with the city of Rivendell, along with Derek, Wendy, the code enforcement, three guys for martyr. We came to a mutual agreement where the sign is supposed to be inside directly into the subdivision now, but it's still sort of in a, sort of unsafe place, because you still have to kind of pull over in the right lane to get ready to make a turn and stop. But I'm here for reassurance, because I was told by Mrs. McClendon, as well as the guys for martyr on yesterday, that I need to come to the meeting and address it to you all, and they are thinking about maybe rerouting the bus, because ever since the 8th of August, I believe, the bus start running, I'm there every day. I walk anywhere between 6:00 and 7:00 in the morning, and I'm actually, I'm here on my night walk now. And believe it or not, it's not economical feasible, you all, because, one, two people ride the bus. Trash is being located back down on the street and everything. The people in my community, they are complaining about the bus. We all have three and four cars. So I think, in my opinion, I think it would be economical feasible to put it in a location where it would be more beneficial than Taylor Road, because everybody down there, you know, nobody rides the bus. And I don't know whether it's any way that you can check to see the participation, but it's just useless. And so, that's what I was saying. I'm just hoping that maybe you all can reroute it to another location that can benefit more than Taylor Road.
We'll contact martyr again.
Yeah, but, yeah, I did. Thank you so much.
No, we'll, we'll contact them, she said. Thank you. Tommy Pye.
Tommy Pye, unincorporated Clayton County. My comments are very short. When the zoning moratorium is lifted, I trust that citizens' input still will be allowed and given the just wait it really deserves. Please, please do that. Number two, there will be an attempt by the various homeowners associations across the district lines to unite, to develop a voting, a voting block to get some things done.
Thank you. Verna Breben.
Good evening. My name Verna Breben. I live in 8370 Hollowbrook Drive. My house is actually in the corner of Hollowbrook and facing Taylor Road. I'm here to speak about martyr as well. I want to voice what the other two ladies in my neighborhood had spoken about. We do have some concerns. I've lived in that house for 25 years. So we were there when the buses used to drive by my house a few years ago. We had major issues. We're very concerned about safety. We're very concerned about basically keeping, because anybody, and not that I have seen anybody taking the bus near my house, which the bus stop is now a few yards from my house now. But the concern that I have is basically, the last time we had somebody actually steal mail from my mailbox, they were trying to cash a check in DeKalb County. So people that are coming from other places that are actually stealing from us. So it's, it's a big concern that we have. I don't know anybody in my neighborhood that actually needs to take the bus. So again, I just want to voice what the other people in my neighborhood have actually stated. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Timothy Von Dell Jefferson.
Good evening, Chairman.
Good evening.
Timothy Von Dell Jefferson, unincorporated Clayton County. I, um, would like to address Commissioner Edmondson. I, um, I have approximately 10 business deals on the table, and I had to extend an olive branch to Mr. Starr. And I met with him and Mr. Mack for about an hour and a half in reference to so many companies' concerns. And it was recommended to me by, to Mr. Starr, to reach out to the individual who voted against certain deals that's going on. So I called your office on Thursday, Susan, and requested to meet with you. I live in District 3, of course, Ms. Rooks have done a wonderful job in communicating whenever I had concerns. And you denied to meet with me. Now, with that stated, the image of the county is tremendously affected right now behind a lot of decisions the board is making, especially the fiasco that happened earlier in the 6 o'clock meeting. I was asked to meet with you, because your intellect would be needed as far as explaining the movement that we are moving into. So when I call, it's business-related. It has nothing to do with a personal agenda. So even though I live in District 3, and you represent constituents of District 4, your vote have an overwhelming effect on the entire county. So therefore, as we try to bring businesses here to the county, we try to reach out prior to anything coming before any zoning board or anything to get a feel as to what we need to do as part of our due diligence. So as we move forward, I would like the entire board, before you make a vote on an issue or bring an issue to the table, remind yourself that the world is looking. It appears as though Clayton County is not open for business. And that is the image. Your last decision in blocking the people from Wisconsin, that reverberated all the way back to Wall Street, you know? So those type of decisions are very, very critical as we try to move the county forward to bring out the median income level and bring high-paying jobs here. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessie Goree.
Jessie Goree, 6648 Metalark Drive, Rivendell, Georgia. Good evening, Chairman, and members of the commission. I am just sitting here shaking my head this evening. About two weeks ago, I started to send you all a long email, but I didn't do it, because I was just hoping that everybody could get along and we could just work together and we could be rational. Now, Ms. Karen Lanier was not present tonight. I am a person that believes in fairness, and she wasn't here to represent herself, and she didn't ask me to speak for her, but I'm just going to say, this is probably what I would say if I were her. All she did was vote, because she was appointed to a board, and she was given the authority to vote one way or the other. But because she voted in a manner that wasn't in agreement with the person that they were, that she employed, she's been removed. And to me, that speaks of retaliation. Now, I'm just gonna go back to the whole beginning of this thing. It seems that Commissioner Edmondson was the person who brought the contract to the table. It seems that Commissioner Edmondson was the person who brought the contract to the table. And let me say this, I don't have a problem with Wade Starr being, having a contract working for the, for this county. I have no problem with that at all. But what I have a problem with is that if a commissioner brings something to a meeting and it's not on the agenda, then what I would have liked to have happened was that he allowed the county attorney to vet the contract to see whether or not Mr. Starr could have served in that capacity in the first place. Had he done that, we wouldn't be in this situation right now because then they might have said, oh, well, no, maybe he's not supposed to do this. Let's get some permission from the housing authority. But we didn't do that. So I don't think that Ms., that the, that, uh, Commissioner Edmondson acted appropriately. But can I vote him off tonight? No, I can't. I would say that maybe he neglected his duty. Maybe the, uh, the county attorney neglected his duty because he didn't read the contract. And would that be considered misconduct? So there were three votes here. So why not just have everybody do their homework? And then you come in the next meeting, you put it on the agenda, and then you had the three votes. And then nobody would be embarrassed because by you all acting in this fashion, then what happened? Mr. Starr then was embarrassed. Because then his board decides, well, you breached your contract. So now we're going to suspend you. So there, he's looking, he's embarrassed, you know. So then, we turned around, he gets his job, his position back. So since he's mad, he decides, well, you know what? Those three people, they need to come off the board. So we just got retaliation, retaliation, retaliation. And it makes no sense. And I don't think that this hearing was done properly. I think you all need to go back and set some rules up.
Your time is up, ma'am.
How you conduct a hearing, and there should be rules for our boards. And nobody should be retaliating.
Thank you, Ms. Goree.
Thank you so much.
Madam Clerk, how we doing on time?
Mr. Chairman, we have time for one more.
Dee E. Allen, I believe it is. Dee Al, Dee Allen. How about Anthony?
Williams.
Williams.
Mr. Chair, Anthony Williams, forty-ninety Huntway, Rex, Georgia. The young lady who got up and presented the very beautiful poster from the children quotes a poem from Maya Angelou. Says, "Never forget what you did, forget what you said. But what I can't forget is how you made me feel." Tonight, what you have done, what I consider is nefarious. Why? Because it's criminal. If you backed a person who breached the contract and you support that individual, what you did was nefarious. What you did was the act of miscreants. People who think that they have some power to use their authority over what is right. What I say to the Clayton County people, Dr. Anderson, although you spoke as one voice, one voice adds up to every voice that will eliminate you from sitting in those chairs. And what we gonna do? We're gonna bring those one voices together. Those one voices gonna resonate. You'll sit by yourself. If you can hold your constituents in your particular district, you'll be by yourself, Mr. Edmondson. Because the rest of you who will not comply, who have breached my trust, who breach Dr. Anderson's trust, who's breached the trust of everyone that's sitting in here, won't be tolerated anymore. Because why? Because I'm asking each of you in here, let us galvanize. Let us stand up.
Sir, 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 address the board, please.
I am, sir. That was for the board, to let them know. To let this board know that you're not gonna, you, your actions, oh, you think one voice has no meaning? My Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, had one voice. But He transformed and changed the world. Look for this one voice. The reason that Mark Winnie was his because I called him. I'm gonna call every news station, every meeting, to make certain that they're here. And when we finish, we're gonna change the look of Clayton County. We're gonna change the look of this board. You're gonna get the support that you need because the people will speak.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, that concludes the public comment.
The board will now consider request of Carol Rogers, interim Director of Central Services.
And while Ms. Rogers is coming, I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize Councilwoman Janelle Bridges and City Manager Sylvia Reddick. Thank you for being here this evening. Oh, what did I say?
You didn't say what city.
Oh, City of Morrow, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. How about taking all of them, hold on a second for me. Take them all together except for number ten.
Number ten, okay. Um, Clayton County Central Services has nine items to present tonight. The first one is a request to sell county surplus property and equipment. The recommendation is being made pursuant to our section code twenty dash twenty, I'm sorry, two dash twenty, two dash twenty-nine, and two dash one forty-six. Central Services requesting the necessary approval from the Board of Commissioners to sell surplus county property at absolute auction. The list of surplus property and equipment is attached as Exhibit A to your documents. Next item is a recommendation for award of RFQ two zero one six dash sixty-eight, which is consultant services for the Comprehensive Justice Management and Information System for Clayton County, Georgia. The recommendation is for award to the overall lowest responsive and responsible bidder, meeting the specifications, which is Schaefer Consultant, Inc., located in Dana Point, California, in the amount of eighteen thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars. Funding is available through the SPOS two thousand fifteen Comprehensive Justice Management and Information System Project. The department recommendation, bid tabulation summary, and agreement are attached for your review and information. Item number three is a request for the Fourth Contract Amendment for One Solution Software, Sun Guard Public Sector LLC. The request is to amend the current contract with Sun Guard Public Sector LLC, located in Lake Mary, Florida. The amendment is for a software replacement from One Solution to Track-It System at a cost of six thousand four hundred dollars for onsite training only and for travel expenses in the not-to-exceed amount of six thousand dollars. Sun Guard Public Sector LLC was awarded this contract by the Board of Commissioners on August the fourteenth, two thousand twelve, and has agreed to accept the amendment. Funding is available through the FY two thousand seventeen Community Development Contract Service Fund. The community development recommendation, vendor statement of work and contract amendment are attached for your review and information. Next item is the recommendation for award of RFP sixteen dash forty-one, which is sports photography services for Clayton County, Georgia. This is an annual contract. The recommendation is to approve the award of the contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, bidder, meeting our specifications. The recommendation is to award to the Portrait FX of South Atlanta, located in Jonesboro, Georgia, as the primary vendor, who firm was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and to Score Photo, Inc., located in Kennesaw, Georgia, as a secondary vendor, who was the second lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Funding is available through the Parks and Recreation Department's General Fund. The department's recommendation, bid tabulation summary, and agreements are attached for your review and information. Next item is a recommendation of award for RFB sixteen dash forty-three, which is public safety uniforms and accessories for Clayton County, Georgia. This is an annual contract. The recommendation is to approve of multi-award contracts to the overall most responsive and responsible bidders, meeting the specification listed below. First is for TNT Uniforms South, Inc., located in Jonesboro, Georgia, Tactical Gear Supply Company, Inc., located in Forest Park, Georgia, and Smyrna Police Distributors, located in Smyrna, Georgia. Funding is available through the Fire Department's Fire Fund and General Fund, the Sheriff's Office General Fund, and the Police Department's General Fund. The department's recommendations, the bid tabulation summary, and agreements are attached for your review and information.
All right, is there a motion?
Uh, a few more.
No, I was it. I'm sorry, I'm jumping the gun. Go ahead.
Just a few more, okay. Next item is a recommendation for renewal of annual contract, RFB fourteen dash twenty-seven, which is for coolant treatment maintenance program for Clayton County. This is an annual contract. The recommendation is to renew the contract with U.S. Water Services, located in St. Michael, Minnesota. The renewal period is from September the fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, through September the fourteenth, two thousand seventeen. There are two remaining renewals on this contract. The Board of Commissioners approved this award on August nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, and the department and vendor renewal acceptance and amendments to the agreement for the above referenced project are attached for your review and information. Item number seven is a recommendation for renewal of annual contract, RFB fourteen dash forty-six, which is Clayton County Transportation and Development Milling of Various Streets in Clayton County. This is an annual contract. And the recommendation is to renew the contract with Atlanta Paving and Concrete Construction, located in Norcross, Georgia. The renewal period is from October the first, two thousand sixteen, through September the thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. There are no remaining renewals on this contract, and the Board of Commissioners approved the award on September the second, two thousand fourteen. The department vendor renewal acceptance and amendment for the agreement are attached for your review and recommendation. Item number eight is a recommendation for annual contract extension of RFQ two zero four dash U. This is an IBM Hardware Equipment Maintenance statewide contract. The recommendation is to extend the contract with International Business Machines, located in Atlanta, Georgia. The extension period is from September the first, two thousand sixteen, through August the thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. The Board of Commissioners approved the award on August the nineteenth, two thousand fourteen. The department renewal acceptance and amendment for the agreement has been attached for your review and information. Um, the last one for this section is our recommendation for annual contract renewal of RFP thirteen dash twenty-five. This is for provision of congregant and home-delivered meals for the Clayton County Senior Service Department. This is an annual contract, and the recommendation is to renew it with Project Open Hand Atlanta, Inc., located in Atlanta, Georgia. The renewal period is from October the first, two thousand sixteen, through September the thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. There are no remaining renewals on this contract, and it was approved by the Board of Commissioners on July the sixteenth, two thousand thirteen. The department and vendor acceptance, renewal, and amendment for the agreement, um, are attached for your review and information. I request that you approve the following rec, the above recommendations. Authorize the chairman or his designee to execute all necessary, I'm sorry, all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly. That's all for this section.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Probably moving a second. Are there any questions on any of the items?
I do. RFQ two thousand sixteen sixty-eight, the consulting services?
Yes.
The contract says that this agreement shall commence on the effective date of this agreement and terminate absolutely and without further obligation on the part of the county on December thirty-first.
Yes.
So of this year?
Right, and this is a contract that we're using for an existing RFP that's already out and it's in evaluation phase, so we need for them to come in and look at the technology part.
Okay.
Yes, so that should be completed.
So it will terminate in December?
Yes, and once the work is completed, which may be before December.
Okay, so you don't expect there to be a renewal?
No, we don't.
Okay. That was my question.
Any other questions, Mr. Edmondson?
This is just a tiny technicality I can't understand. Uh, RFP, uh, RFB sixteen forty-three regarding the, the, the uniforms?
Yes.
These most responsive bidder, bidders, TNT and one through three, and the items?
Yes.
There are items on the bid list that aren't referenced, for example, items two, three, five. Do we not get to have size eight boots?
Well, they were not required, so there was some duplication, um, by the department. They felt like, uh, the items, let's say for two and three, was duplicated with one and four. So they decided not to award those items.
Thank you for being prepared. That's awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Here and now, those are favor eye. My polls. It's unanimous.
Number ten. Um, this is a recommendation for the design bill of a concession building at Flatshoes Park, utilizing the Georgia statewide contract, SWC nine 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 nine, SPD, S two zero one six zero two one six dash zero zero two. The recommendation is to utilize the statewide contract for the design bill of a concession building at Flatshoes Park from Centennial Contractors Enterprise, Inc., located in Atlanta, Georgia, in the amount of four hundred sixty-seven thousand, four hundred nineteen dollars, eighty-three cents, as requested by the SPOS PM. Funding is available through the FYE two thousand nine SPOS Fund and the HUD CDBG Fund. The SPOS PM recommendation memo and agreement are attached for your review and information. This request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the chairman or his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract and to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any questions?
I do. Last board meeting, um, maybe Mr. Gi, we approved recapturing HUD funds for the same project. Fifty-three thousand, one fifty-two sixty-six is what I have from Resolution two thousand sixteen, one six, one fifty. That was for the same project, is that right?
Not for the same park, one or the other.
Yeah, the same park.
It's not for the concession stand?
It is for the concession stand.
Concession building, please?
Oh, it's definitely a building.
A concession, um, project.
Okay, so now the cost associated is five hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars, forty-nine cents. So it's an increase by fifty-three thousand dollars?
Uh, no, it's still four hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
But from the recapture from last meeting, we just gave the project fifty-three thousand dollars?
Yes, that's an additional, um, funding that was requested during the process for HUD projects that CDBG, that they asked for the project.
Why did it go up by fifty-three thousand dollars?
Commissioner, the recapture funds, actually now it will go to the CDBG funds, opposed us using all the SPOS money. It still is at the four sixty-six price tag. We just won't use as much as the SPOS money. We'll apply that, those proceeds to the CDBG funding.
Then why are we allocating four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars, eighty-three cent to this project? Why aren't we reducing it by the fifty-three thousand we just approved two weeks ago?
Again, the, the recapture funds were, the spirit of that was to ensure that we put those fundings with the CDBG funding that was originally budgeted, opposed to using funding from the SPOS money. So we, we kept it at the, the, the total budget amount without actually increasing the budget. So we just moved the funding to the CDBG funding, that's all we did, with the recapture funds. We did not increase the budget.
That's not what the resolution states, Mr. Samford. I'm, I'm confused. From Resolution two thousand sixteen, one fifty, two weeks ago, it says that we are gonna use it for this project. There's nothing that says it gets reallocated in any other fashion.
Not sure, I'm not looking at the resolution.
Okay.
But the dollar figure should not have increased the budget for the overall project. We did not increase that to the fifty-three thousand. We actually were taking the CDBG funding, allocating that to this, to the two hundred and fifty we had initially, so therefore that the budget would not increase, wouldn't have to use as much of the SPOS funding initially.
Okay, but last time, the request was four hundred and seventy thousand, correct? Or was it always four sixty-six?
Four sixty-six. Four sixty-six.
Okay, so then we got this additional recapture money at fifty-two or fifty-three thousand?
That's correct.
Where did that money go to?
The fifty-two thousand?
Yeah.
Fifty-three thousand, one fifty-two sixty-six.
So where is that, what, what pot does that money sit in?
It's still part of the CDBG funding. All we did was increase the line item there. Now what we're gonna do is decrease the SPOS funding that was allocated to keep the overall project at the four sixty-six.
Right, so why isn't this proposal a reduction by fifty-three thousand dollars?
Because it says SPOS and CDBG right there.
Right.
In that sentence, it says it's coming from both.
Funds are available through, this is the same language we have from before. So what changed from last meeting when it failed to this meeting?
Nothing changed, other than the actual, actual request for the money to be re-appropriated to SPOS over, to the overall project.
So the meeting where there was only four people here was two-two.
Yes, ma'am.
Had it passed at that meeting, will we have been talking about a recapturing of fifty-three thousand dollars two weeks ago?
No, ma'am.
That, that's my point.
So that I'm clear. The, the dollars that we asked for the recapture funds, we're not, the bottom line is we're not increasing the budget. The four sixty-six. All we're doing is re-appropriating those monies to the CDBG funding, so therefore we're, we're reducing the SPOS funding that's allocated to it, to balance it out. That's, that's the spirit of the resolution.
Okay, well, for me, regardless of it's five twenty or four sixty-seven, that's too much money to be spending on a concession stand.
Uh, will someone, uh, hold on.
I am talking. Well, get your person dressed and just suck it. Uh, too much money for a concession stand when we have so many other projects, vital projects, that, that money can be used toward. You just heard from Mr. Gooden. You, I mean, I've heard from other people. You, I mean, I've heard from other people since this proposal has been made about why those vital projects aren't being funded. And I know that there are certain product, projects that the CDBG money cannot be used for, but by the same instance, there are projects that it can be used for. Now why aren't we not looking in that direction as opposed to building a concession stand that, again, is used only six months out of the year? Uh, Commissioner Hamburg?
Uh, yes. Uh, Mr. Stanford, will you please give a history of this concession building and what it includes and how far back we've talked about that and how the money was borrowed to use for other things? Please.
Yes, ma'am. So back in two thousand and twelve, there were allocation of, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, um, do renovations on the Flatshoes concession building. Based upon some additional allocation that was needed, uh, for other projects, CDBG projects, the money was pulled off of that project and reallocated for other, other things. Um, in short, over the next three years, Commissioner Hamburg continued to try to get money allocated for that project. Um, after we revisited the project, I guess about a year ago, um, the goal was, instead of doing a renovation project, um, why won't we look at doing a new concession building? Part of that was to actually do an RFP to go out to the street for that work to get done. Unfortunately, the RFP did not get done in a timely fashion, so we end up looking at a state contract to, in fact, do the a- actual new construction. Um, the byproduct of that was allocating additional money from not just the CDBG funding, but also look at money from our SPOS program under the general, um, improvement funds and the O-nine SPOS program under parks. And so we added additional funding to the project to, in fact, to cover the expenses for the state contract.
Will you please state what is included in this project?
Yes, ma'am. So it's a two-story facility, um, air conditioning building with, um, harder boardsiding and shingle roofing. Um, the proposal is about eighteen hundred square feet of a total, um, building build-out. There's a men's and women's restroom, there's a concession kitchen, there's a concession storage area, there's an office and storage room, and there's a covered area with an area for dining at the concession window. On the second floor, there's an observation and scorekeeping in three directions to oversee the baseball and football field. Um, and that's kind of the, all amenities for that respective building.
How many square foot?
Eighteen hundred per foot, per floor, I'm sorry. Eight hundred per floor. Thirty-six hundred square feet.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Nice house. Okay, any other, any other questions? All right, here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Three-two, it passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The board will consider requests of Ramona Bivens, Chief Financial Officer.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I have two items for your consideration this evening. Budget Amendment four dash nineteen is for two thousand fifteen SPOS to transfer funds for change management sessions and consultant services for the comprehensive justice management and information system in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. The last item is a request for a refund in the amount of six hundred fifty-four dollars and fourteen cents to Shady Vent LLC, located in Powder Springs, Georgia. And this is refunding the building permit fee that they paid.
Do I have a motion? I'll make the motions, there are second. Properly moved and second. Any questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The board will consider requests of Nella Cooper, Human Resources Manager.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. I have, uh, four requests this evening. Would you like for me to do all four?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, the first request that I have is, uh, for community development. They are requesting a reorganization by deleting the GIS specialist position and the permits and license supervisor position, and creating a permits and license, license manager position and an office assistant senior position, as well as updating the job description of the office manager. And with that, uh, update, there is no, uh, cost associated with that. Uh, the deletion and the addition of the two, uh, positions uh, will generate an annual budget savings of sixteen thousand, sixty-five dollars and fourteen cents. The, uh, the second request is to increase the step and, uh, step and salary for a judicial secretary, uh, Ms. West, effective July one, two thousand sixteen. And this request is due to the Council of Superior Court Judges' salary schedule. Uh, the state of Georgia, uh, through the CSCJ reimburses the county for the salaries paid plus seven point nine, uh, seven point nine-five percent FICA. And, um, Ms. West was at the top of her scale and with the, um, with the COLA, the steps were increased. So this will, uh, take her from the previous maximum of thirty-five to thirty-eight. Uh, and then, uh, the third request is, um, requesting the county to utilize the county finance slash payroll department to issue supplements to the state employees within the district attorney's office. This funding will come from the state forfeiture funds, uh, that's deposited into their fund two-twenty-one. And, uh, the supplement, like I said, will go to the, uh, the state employees in the district attorney's office. There's eleven positions currently, and there is no cost to the county's budget for this. And the last request that I have is the renewal of the Aetna Medicare Advantage, uh, coverage. This plan is due to renew, uh, January one, two thousand seventeen, through December thirty-one, two thousand seventeen. This is a fully insured product that's open, that, that's offered to our Medicare, uh, enrolled retirees, and there is no premium increase for this upcoming plan year. And the only changes are the changes that are required by the Centers of Medicare Medicaid Services.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Well, second, it probably moved and second, are there any questions on any of the items? Mr. Anderson?
Um, there not being any legislative requests, cover pages, and any of these, it was hard for me to piece together who and what, but you say there is no premium increase in the Aetna policy?
Yes.
Is that premium to the county and the employees?
Yes, it's the same premium as they're paying, as the county and the retirees are paying currently.
There's no adjustment on any-
No adjustment either way. No.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I was having problems with my computer, uh, with the trial of the new system and the old system, and my computer did an update, and it wouldn't let me open any of the attachments. It was kind of a fiasco that day, so I apologize.
A- and then, um, I understand utilizing the finance and payroll system for the district attorneys.
Yes.
Um, this message regarding the judicial secretaries, is that, is that the same, the same personnel, or is that from?
Uh, that's for Superior Court Administration.
Okay, so that's in addition?
Uh, that's not the district attorney.
So there are, so there's the Superior Court and the district attorney and the individual for the COLA?
Uh, well, the, the, the individual with the COLA is the Superior Court Administrative Secretary.
Uh, okay, so these other forty-four state-paid secretaries are not included?
No, no, they gave that as the backup for all the various counties.
I get, I get it now. Okay, I understand. Thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
No other questions?
Any other questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
The board will now conduct a public hearing concerning the Edward Byrne Memorial Local Law Enforcement Assistance Grant Program.
Is there anybody here that would like to speak in reference to this block grant program uh, by the Edward Byrne Memorial Local Law Enforcement Assistance Grant Program? If anybody's here to speak up for it, against it, then now would be your time to come forward. Here and now, Madam Clerk.
Item number ten is a discussion item, uh, on the Commissioner's block grant.
Ms. Bivens? You have some information in reference to a request that was made by Commissioner Rooks here. And your request, Commissioner Rooks, correct me if I'm wrong, you wanted to discuss allocation or reallocation of some of the funds.
Well, I think we all had a number of questions. I thought I saw Mr. Brinson.
Mr. Brinson is here.
Okay.
Come, step forward, Mr. Brinson, if you don't mind.
Good evening.
State your name for us.
John Brinson with the Clayton Collaborative Authority.
There are some questions raised, um, at the, one of the meetings before about, um, accountability and the persons or parties or entities receiving funding from the county. Is there any oversight from your office as to whether or not they're using the funds, in the manner that they indicated to your office that they are going to use the funds?
No, ma'am.
Is there a process that we can employ that would assist us in understanding and knowing that they're using the funds from this county in the way that they say they're going to use it?
Yes, ma'am. Um, in the past fiscal year, risk management, um, and audits, I'm sorry, and internal audits, um, went through all of those grants, reached out to those organizations, and actually, I don't want to use the word investigated, but audited, and they found no issues with those organizations that were funded last fiscal year.
Okay, well, we asked this question last time. No one seemed to know.
I was contacted-
No, you were here, not, not, not against you. I'm looking at Ms., it's the Finance Department. No one seems to know how this was working. And we had questions from the community about whether or not the applicants who are receiving funding were using the money in the, in the manner which they indicated to you guys that they were going to use it and then to us, vis-à-vis, that they were going to use it.
We were not, as an organization, made aware of what the findings were from, uh, the internal audits. What I do know is that all of the organizations that were funded by the county, all of those organizations are providing good service based on my interactions with those organizations throughout the last fiscal year. Uh, we found last year that there was discrepancy with one issue, I mean, one, one organization, and, uh, the county took the requisite actions to ensure that those monies were reallocated to, um, inappropriate, uh, inappropriate organization that would use the funds like they were supposed to.
Okay. Keep finishing.
My question is, in your reviewing those, um, requests from the different organizations, are we paying attention, I know we, we're not federal, but we're county, we're still, that's still taxpayer money. Are we paying attention to things like if they are specific, you know, religion, or, you know, they implement and so forth? And, y- you know, we all have our different faiths, but, you know, we have to be careful that we're not giving money to organizations that may be centered around a certain faith and, you know, our taxpayers are, are, are of different faiths. So that's kind of what I'm curious about. Um, used to, you know, like their certificates, are their certificates nonprofit status, is all that valid? I know Commissioner Rooks just asked you to, some, similar question to that. So you're saying all that stuff is valid and up to date? Um, CDBG, I think, when they used to do money, they used to have to, the organizations have to have an audit themselves? Because they were nonprofits, do we require any of that, that these organizations that we give the commissions, when they have their audits done? You're shaking your head, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
This is the first year that we have required them, and we discussed it last year.
Yeah.
And after, um, Ms. Mayor from Internal Audits went out, and, and Mr. Brinson, correct me if I'm wrong, they had to submit that with their application?
Yes, ma'am. Um, they are required to submit to us, um, and we fought for this for the smaller nonprofits within Clayton County who are doing good works, um, to give us either their last audit-
Okay.
-or their nine-ninety. And usually on that nine-ninety that's filled out, um, it's going to the federal government. It lists how they spent all their monies for the last fiscal year.
And also, we require them to send that to our office, so we have restarted receiving some of those because a lot of those, that fiscal year ended in June. That Arts Clayton just sent me theirs about two weeks ago, right after we had our meeting. Arts Clayton brought me a, a folder about this thick with all of their documents in it. And we've gotten some other, um, financial audits from some of the other ones as well.
Yeah, I know we, this has kind of been dragging on a little bit. Is anybody, again, see, a brief work session to look at these, or? It, because that, y- y- we got a stack in our office that's that high or taller than I am. And, I don't know, just-
One of the things I talk to, um, my staff about is what I would like to see. So you could have a work session before, but during the budget process, before we get to where we publish that document and have our budget hearing, but it would require Mr. Brinson to maybe move back the date that he starts having his meetings with them or the application deadline. So maybe in January, we can get them and give them to you to start going through and looking at them. Send us back, send it back to the Finance Department, what it is you want to see, and we'll incorporate that into the budget, and then it can all be approved in the budget process, and then legal can just do the contracts at the time that they normally do them. That's one of the things we talked about this week. I haven't talked to him about it yet, but that was, we were kind of brainstorming, what could we do to help the board members get these documents earlier, where they can look at it and maybe have some discussion about it before?
Commissioner Gregory, we're amenable, uh, to that as an organization if, uh, that is the desire of the board.
And I know there's some good ones, you know, we all know, you know, some of them may operate in our individual districts, and we know they're doing a good work or whatever, and, and so forth, but I, I don't know, I guess, you know, I agree with you.
Well, one of the things that we included in there, um, in this past fiscal year is a page where they actually list which district that they're coming out of. Um, it's in there. Um, we began, uh, requiring those things, but, um, we're willing to work with the board to, um, codify things if need be, um, based on what your desires are.
I have a suggestion, it's not a question, but I, but when we start working on those things, I would like for us to include, uh, what percentage of the monies that we give go towards staffing as opposed to operations, you know, if we can find that out, because most, well, a lot of grants, you can't spend on staffing or whatever, and I don't know if we need to set up something like that and all, but I would like to recommend that whenever we have, or if we do have sessions and all, as a recommendation.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. Ms. Brinson, so a couple of questions. They're not meant to sound edgy, but they might. So, um, year over year over year over year, the recipients of these county charitable grants, from my perspective, don't seem to change very much, and the dollars don't. Can you speak to that, how, how, how different the recipients are year over year?
I've noticed that trend, uh, Commissioner.
They almost never change, maybe one little tag on the bottom, otherwise the same thing year over year over year. It's Arts Clayton, it's Rainbow House, it's Housing Authority, it's same-
Every, every one of those organizations, um, and the people-
I'm not saying they're bad, I'm just saying-
Oh, okay.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, it doesn't, it doesn't seem to change much. So I guess my questions are, i- i- if you, if you'll agree with that, is, um, and, and speak to it if they don't, is, uh, where does the budget come from? We get this dollar amount in our budget, it's, it's not something we ever discuss. So whether it's two-point-one million or one-point-seven million, where does it come from? I know there's an occasional arbitrary addition or subtraction at this board, but on our level, it's not going through your process. So where, where, where does, where does the recommendation come from, from your office? And if they don't materially change year over year with any, with any significance, and again, I don't mean this in a negative way, but then why do we need the Clayton Collaborative to collect the applications? We're giving the same amount to the same people over and over again, and our own internal audits is doing the follow-up. I, wha- what do we, what do we need Clayton Collaborative for at all?
May I say this?
Hold on, let, let him get his answer.
And again, I, I'm not attacking, it's, it's, I think it's a fair question.
Well, this was going to go toward the, his answer too, because I have noticed a few, and that's why I have questions, because there are a few new ones that have popped up in organizations I know nothing about, and I'll keep up-
Well, that determination for the actual dollar amounts that go to the organizations, they're not assigned by us as an organization. We facilitate the process, we, uh, shoulder, uh, a lot of those questions that come from the community, um, about, um, can we apply? This is the work. Uh, I make the recommendation during the workshops that I provide to the, uh, non-pro- work. I make the recommendation during the workshops that I provide to the nonprofit organizations that are applying, to put forth the best possible grant. We then score those grants, I mean, those applications, and then we submit them to county government. We don't determine that dollar amount, I couldn't tell you where exactly the final dollar amount comes from.
Well, the recommendation we get from y'all is always a list of recommended recipients, and it's always year over year, the same recipient, the same dollar amount as last year. You saying that's not coming from you?
No, that, that is coming from our organization, based on, based on what they're, based on what they're asking for, that dollar amount in the left column of that page is what they're asking for. So if they're asking for the same amount, that's on them. Now, as far as the award goes, that's coming from 112 Smith Street, the decision to award them that amount. One of the things that I share during the workshop is, hey, there's been a change in Clayton County as far as revenue goes, so my, I always anticipate less monies based on what kind of revenue that we've got coming in. So I always suggest to them, when you're applying, be realistic about what you're asking for, about the people that you're serving, hopefully the monies that do come from you all is sufficient to help sustain them to provide those services, but as an organization, for what we do, we facilitate the process for you all. You, you know, we, we've never, I've been involved with the Commissioners Block Grant since 2008. Prior to that, the Collaborative facilitated the process, and at one point, they dictated how much monies those individuals were receiving. Upon my getting involved with it, doing some investigative work on my part, we found out that a number of the members of our board who, at that time, was evaluating the grants, were receiving the monies.
I believe that.
So I made, we made the change, we did some corrective action, quick, fast, in a hurry, to ensure that the process was fair for all the citizens who were applying.
And thank you for that. So, a follow-up to that, so, a- a- again, with your workshops and your scoring and your recommendations to 112 Smith Street, and then when it gets to the board for consideration, it's materially the same recipients, the same dollar amounts year over, year over, year, is there a process or are there policies that you and the Collaborative have for scoring so that we're able to diffuse this amongst the community and not just the same entities over and over and over again?
The ultimate decision for funding is done on that end of the, of this room, so I can't say that they were awarded or afforded those monies, because I don't know. You'll notice in the right-hand column, I never, I put what they asked for. I'm not aware of what's been allocated until after the fact, once it comes out in the final budget. That's when I find out. So that determination was, has not been the Collaborative's-
Yeah, they all don't have any policies. No, I get that, but I'm just trying to say that there's, you talk about, about workshops, but if it's getting to us and it's the same 20 charitable interests over and over, why, who are you having workshops with? Are you seeing the executive director of Arts Clayton and, and, and Rainbow House are getting together with you every year and talking the same thing over and over, over, every year, or are the people that go to the workshops getting low enough scores that they're not getting any benefit at all because the other ones have already gathered, and, and maybe it's us doing it because when it gets to us, it's already on that same list? But I'm having a hard time, having a hard time understanding who you're holding these workshops for and what their benefit is.
Well, in our letter of invitation, we put it out on the county work website. All nonprofits are invited from within Clayton County, once they go out to the we- website and identify, hey, here's the date, here's the workshop. Everybody can come to the workshop, everybody. Everybody can apply. Those individuals who do apply, they're rated, it is submitted. Now, that determination on who receives what, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you. Sometimes, organizations outside of those few folk get the grant. I've seen that consistently. A number of the folk who are receiving the monies are doing great work for the people of Clayton County. Oftentimes, there are folk who are proposing to do the same things. There are folk who are proposing to do that same type of, exact same type of work for more monies.
So let me ask you this-
Does that come into play? No. All we do is we rate them just like anybody else.
So when there are two entities that do the same thing, do y'all rate one the same as the other?
Yes sir, based on their score. If they write the same, if, all grants being equal, they, we use the same rubric on everybody, so you and I, we, we're doing the same service. My grant is tight and right, no issues from the evaluators, everything's there, there's a good chance I could score 100 and you could score 100. They're both submitted as 100, 100 scores.
So they're both in my stack with your rating, so I realize this-
I'm sorry, Commissioner Emerson, some of those entities don't provide the same level of, of detail. I've read through some of them, they may be providing the same work, but you may ask for financials and another entity have, has not provided that information.
And what, from their financial standpoint, Commissioner, we ask for the 990 and we ask for the audit, either or. In some instances, we get both. The better-run organizations, nonprofits-
Have all the documents or requests.
They have everything that we ask, and then some, and they're scored appropriately. For us, as an organization, by doing it the way that we're doing it right now, it makes it fair across the board. There are one or two organizations that don't write very good grants, however, they are providing good service. I can rattle off a, a couple of them that, that come to mind, but they're doing a great service to the people of Clayton County, and you all have ensured that they continue to be able to do that work here.
So let me ask you this, Mr. Brinson, this part is going to get right out of your scope real quick, but this year's different, we've got the big stack that we, that we're alluding to, it's like a three-foot stack of applications on each of our, literally, but from the point that you turn it over in previous years, say just from 2008 until this last year, who do you turn, you turn it over to the finance department, or where do you turn that request?
Over to, to the finance department, and what I've done for you all-
And then from there, whatever happens.
What I've done for you all is, I've ensured that I've included certain pages so you don't have to go through all that information.
Well, I appreciate that.
Certain pages with just the pertinent information about the organization, whether they receive-
The requested, the recommended, and, yeah.
And on that one page, so it makes it easier, if you all are looking at that, to make a determination whether you want to fund or not.
And I appreciate that, and I'm sure my colleagues do, so, I guess that's more of a finance question. So once finances collected this in previous years, seems to me, if my memory is correct, we get it as part of the budget and it's material, the same as year after year after year, so where is the subjective, who's putting that together before it gets to us? Because what he's saying, he's turning over to the county, is not what gets before us for consideration. So where, who, who changes that, who populates that, where's that, how's that happening?
Commissioner, Commissioner Emerson, what has happened is each year, and I can't tell you from way back when, which entities were selected to receive the grant. We've budgeted the same amount of money each year, and the list has not changed. We present the list to the board in the budget document, and at that time, the board has discretion to say, no, we don't want to give to this particular agency like we did last year, which is kind of bought about this change that we're trying to do now, because I feel that it's the board, that the board should determine who gets the money, not the finance department, and not Mr. Brinson.
So he's dropping off a list, a stack, a list, a scoring, when it gets to us from finance, it's just last year's list, and then we can come in and on a case-by-case basis say, I want this or I don't want that.
That is correct.
After the budget's been adopted, with that dollar amount.
No, the budget hasn't been adopted, it's, before we, when I present the budget, what has now-
Dollar amount has.
The dollar amount is presented in the budget document as part of the budget hearing before we adopt the budget, and, and the back of their-
So whether he turned anything over to y'all or not, y'all are still bringing us last year's numbers and allocations anyways.
We don't change, we, we leave the money the same, we never cut it, we leave that part of the budget, the same amount of funding.
See what I'm saying, Mr. Brinson, with all the work you're doing, it doesn't get to us. Okay. I mean, I mean, basically, when it gets down to what we're voting on.
Yeah.
Okay, and thank you for your efforts, I mean, thank you, I didn't, again, it's going to sound edgy, it's not meant to, but thank you for your efforts, but, yeah, we've got to fix whatever, whatever's going on, without pointing any fingers, we got to fix whatever's going on, so make sure we-
And that's, that's why we wanted to give y'all, trying to transition to giving you the applications once they come. He gives us a list of everybody that has requested and where they have scored them, but again, because it's the Commissioners' Grants, the, the board should be selecting who we give these to, even though we, and that's why this year, when we did the second budget document, when we adopted the budget, I don't know if you noticed or not, we removed the names, we put a pot of money there for the board to determine, who do you want that money to go to? Because I agree, we should not be doing it, Mr. Brinson should not be doing it, we should give you all the list and you decide who, who do these go to. Historically, it has not been done that way, and when we had this discussion last year, and I actually asked the question, then why we, why is the finance department just putting the same people in the book year after year when it's the Commissioners' Grant? We shouldn't be making that decision.
Yeah, and I totally, I totally agree with you, because as, you know, each of us as Commissioners, we hear in our office probably daily, if not daily, weekly, you know, different organizations are contacting us, you know, about their nonprofit and so forth, and then we also know those organizations in the county that are helping our citizens, like Community Services Authority.
Exactly.
We can't say enough about them, because we get those calls from the citizens, you know, needing utility assistance, needing rent assistance and so forth, and it's great to have them, and they don't just rely totally on us, and so, again, I agree with what you said, if we can come up with a solution, Commissioner Emerson, of how we handle this, because we're, we know it from, in our offices, from our constituent services, where agencies are working out there to help our citizens and so forth.
And I would like to add to Commissioner Hamburg's request or recommendation to not only the percentage that they're spending in each expense category, but maybe the percentage of Clayton County residents that are being served as well.
Absolutely.
Great, true.
Think that we may want to put that in there as well.
And Clayton County organizations, are they all Clayton County organizations?
Yes.
Okay.
Everybody's located here, that's one of the prerequisites that you are located here in the county. We do have a few organizations out there that do provide services from outside the county for the residents of Clayton County. Have they applied for Commissioners' Block Grant here? No, but they have come in and attempted it, but because they're not physically located here in the county, I don't think they ever received funding.
Because we are a little delayed in making decisions, and I know some of the organizations are in need of the funding, can we agree to have a work session before the next board meeting at 6 o'clock?
I'm fine with it.
And then we decide what we're going to do and come out and vote on it at 7 o'clock? I know there have been some people calling, Clayton County Services Authority, well, Community Services- Community Services Authority.
I heard a call from D-Fax.
Uh-huh, D-Fax are getting called.
Several, so.
So you guys are talking about subjectively taking lists and saying, well, this one and that one, not coming up with a new process or a mechanism or an annual cap, you would think we're going to get all that done in the next 13 and a half days to talk about publicly, at a last minute, make a decision?
But we've been talking about this agnostism, I'm sure we all have a process in mind, I can come up with process I think we should employ.
You think taking five different processes out of the blue on a desk publicly and trying to come up with something within 59 minutes is the best way?
Well, if we circulate it before then, I just don't know how much discussion, more discussion we need to have, when there are some entities who really do need the funding, and we should assist as best we can. I'm just trying to marry the two philosophies so that we can get this done quicker.
Well, let's talk about that right now, since we got a work session, like, do we think there should be an annual cap on the amount? Like, we're going to give $2 million and we're going to prioritize from top to bottom, or do we say we'll give whatever because want everybody to get what they asked for? That's a policy statement, you know, if you go one way or the other.
I don't think there should be a cap, well, I do think there should be a cap, I just don't think that we should have a specific number, depending on what the fiscal issues are with the county will determine whether or not we can give that amount of money. So maybe, one year maybe a million dollars, another year maybe 800,000, depending on what we are.
962?
862.
1,862, that's what we gave this year.
Yeah, and what about ongoing, like, if there's a great organization that needs money? I know there was one that we just found that was using our facilities but didn't have a lease, right, and I think you just mentioned a great, great organization, but they haven't been getting the requested monies.
Right.
Well, are we going to increase that, or are we going to cut that from somebody else who's been receiving it for 10 or 20 years in a row? Because, let's face it, those are nonprofits, not departments of the county.
Absolutely.
So should there be a weaning off? I know some people feel very strongly about that one way or the other, but-
I agree.
I mean, those are policy shifts.
I think what we need to do is, Commissioner Rooks just says, to have a work session where we can, there's too many variables to consider tonight, and-
I'm open to making it 5, if necessary.
Say 5, well-
I mean, no, make it at 5 o'clock, you know, to allow leeway, I, I was talking, yeah, that's too much for y'all.
If y'all can spend two hours talking about this, I mean, I've been asking you for a long time to get some thoughts, so if you think you can prepare it, I mean, I'll be here if y'all want, but I doubt we'll get it done.
Mr. Chairman, we can try, yeah, we can do it. Mr. Chairman, can I make a recommendation? Are there organizations that you all agree on that you definitely want to continue to support at a dollar amount?
We got too many conversations going on, say again.
I was asking, are there any organizations that you definitely want to continue to support? Because you don't have to do them all at one time, if there's some that you can agree on, we can go ahead and start the process and get those done, and then-
That's good.
But what, can we agree on the amount? That's the issue.
That's what I'm saying, the organizations and the amount, although, there are some that we've been supporting in the past that you want to continue at the same amount or whatever, or at a higher amount that they requested. I can get you the amount that we gave them last year, if you want that.
From the standpoint of what kind of impact it's going to have on the organization.
Right.
If they've been used to getting their 100,000, and now we agree to give them 500,000, how's that going to impact the service that they can provide to the citizens?
Okay. Well, let's just come to the work session, let's see where we go from there.
Okay, I think we got consensus for a work session, 5:00 PM for next board meeting, Mr. Brinson. Did you make a request to be present for that as well?
No, I was inquiring, do you want me present for your work session?
What's the pleasure of the board to have him on that?
I don't think you need him.
Yes.
I really.
I don't think so.
No.
He's like, I don't want, I don't want to get there.
No, no, it's up to you all, I, I serve at the-
I mean, he's got a scoring, and-
I think at this point, we, it's up to us to really come up with-
We have to have a policy, how much are we going to get, how are we going to give it, there's our formula, so we can take his scoring and put it into our grid.
If you need me, I'm there.
Have y'all speed dial, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, where are we? Yes, sir, thank you.
Interim Chief Staff Attorney, Jack Hancock.
That's at 5 o'clock?
Have eight resolutions for your consideration.
All right, I want you to take them together except for item 14, Resolution 2016-159.
All right, sir.
And 15, Resolution 2016-160.
All right, sir. Oh, Resolution 1, 2016-156 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County, on behalf of Clayton County Library Services, to accept grant funds from the Georgia Public Library Services, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary, to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required, to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes. 2016-157 is a resolution to authorize Clayton County to accept a vehicle seized for forfeiture by the Clayton County Police Department Drug Task Force, to authorize the vehicle for county usage, and assign the vehicle to the Clayton County Police Drug Task Force, to authorize central services, fleet maintenance, and the chief financial officer to take all actions necessary to achieve the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes. 2016-158 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County, on behalf of Clayton County Police Department, to apply for and if awarded, accept a grant from the United, US Department of Justice, Office of Justice Program, Bureau of Justice Assistance, to purchase exercise equipment to promote health and fitness and public safety employees, to authorize the chairman to execute any documents, and, excuse me, any documents and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary, to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required, to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes. Resolution 2016-161 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to convey a permanent easement and a temporary construction easement to the Clayton County Water Authority- to the Clayton County Water Authority, associated with construction of a new sanitary sewer pipe, to authorize the chairman to execute all documents necessary and otherwise to perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution two thousand sixteen, one sixty-two is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a location agreement with Trans-Radio Pictures, Inc., providing for the terms and conditions under which Clayton County property will be used for the purpose of photographing, filming, and recording, to authorize the chairman or his designee to execute the location agreement and otherwise to perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution two thousand sixteen, one sixty-three is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to grant a special facility use request for the Rotary Club of Clayton County, Inc., to host a series of events for international college students at Clayton County International Park, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the resolutions as presented.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Probably moved in second. Are there any questions on any of the items? Here or none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
I oppose number dash one-five-nine.
Yes, sir.
Which one?
You said one-five-nine? Yes, sir. Resolution two thousand-
We haven't done it.
I'm sorry.
We haven't done it.
I, I didn't, one-five-nine and one-six-oh were not included.
Okay, sorry. I'll save it.
Okay. One-five-nine is a resolution of the Housing Authority, is a request for your approval of a resolution of the Housing Authority of Clayton County approving, in principle, the issuance of its revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed twenty million dollars to finance the cost of the acquisition, renovation and installation of a multifamily housing facility, and authorizing the execution of a letter of intent and inducement agreement with Hampstead Keystone Partners, L.P., and for related purposes.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Probably moved in second. Any questions? I have a question. Is this not the same type of revenue bond deal that we turned down about, I don't know, two, two months ago or so? That dealt with three apartment complexes?
It is the same type of vehicle. I don't know anything about the projects, but it is the same vehicle that was involved in the last one. Yes, sir.
Right, now who's making this request? The Housing Authority? Was it the board that afforded it? Or, I know it had to work through Mr. Starr to the board.
I don't know how it got to the board, but it is a request from their board. They have passed a resol-, their board has passed a resolution.
Didn't we get an email from City of Jonesboro, just, or was it City- Housing Authority asking our support of this, 'cause this is-
Not to do what?
Asking for our support of this. City of Jonesboro, I mean, is there, is there a-
But you could have, I don't know.
Okay.
I mean, I wasn't a part of that, so.
Well, the Housing Authority is acting as a pass-through to secure these bonds, correct?
The Clayton County Housing Authority.
The Clayton County Housing Authority is acting as, as will be the issuer of the bonds, and your approval of this, if you give it, will authorize those bonds to be issued as tax-free. That, that, that is tax-exempt, excuse me. That is the, the reasoning for it to have to come to you, is that's the only way they get the tax-exempt status on the bonds.
And that was the same issue that we turned down a couple of months back.
It, it is the same type of request that you, that you turned down. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Given that City of Jonesboro kinda asked us to support this, it's in their jurisdiction.
Yeah, but my, go ahead.
But it does, it does say to install new multifamily housing, right? So they'll be building?
No, they're renovating. It's not for new construction.
What does install a multifamily housing facility mean?
We didn't draft this one. I don't, I can't tell ya what the intent is.
Hold on a second, Jack. We got somebody. Elaborate on that for the commissioner. State your name and the company or business you worked for.
How are you doing? My name is Ryan Cusage. I'm a senior project manager with the Hampstead Companies. We're the developer based out of San Diego. We also have offices in Bethesda, Maryland, and Charleston, South Carolina. So, uh, did you have a specific question then about the property that we're doing?
Define what multi-
No, not multifamily. I know what that means. It says to acquire, renovate, and install. So what does the word install mean?
I think the installing of the facility is a new community center that we're planning to build. But in terms of the actual multifamily housing, we're planning to renovate the one hundred and eighty-four units that are currently at the property.
So it means install a, in essence, a clubhouse. It does not mean to install a multifamily housing facility.
That's correct.
Even though it says to install a multifamily housing facility.
Uh, I wouldn't have written it that way, but-
Okay.
Is there a clubhouse on the property now?
Uh, there is a facility used for, for tutoring and for adult education classes. We're planning to renovate that, but in addition to that, we're planning to build this community center, which will also hold a new management office to be used for the residents and the management team.
So would you say that what you are planning to do with these revenue bonds is to enhance the quality of life for those citizens who live there?
Absolutely.
Okay, and my point here to this board is that that was the same request as last time. And I know Commissioner Gregory, Gregory, you said that a Jonesboro city council person-
The City of Jonesboro, this is in their jurisdiction, not in the unincorporated Clayton County.
In our county. And the citizens, all the, we serve safe citizens. But yet still, in the unincorporated area, we turned down.
I didn't vote for it yet. I just did a second so we can get some discussion on it.
You didn't vote against it?
I said I didn't vote for it yet. I said we hadn't voted yet. We're just getting some discussion.
No, I'm just-
Don't assume.
No, 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 no. I'm just, I'm just stating the obvious here. So I'm clear, yes. I'm just stating the obvious that we turned down a great opportunity for our citizens in the unincorporated areas. But, uh, and I'm not trying to get anybody to, especially voted up or down, but just making a statement of the obvious. Uh, okay, anybody have any other questions? Thank you for clarifying that for us, sir.
My pleasure.
All right, those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed.
Aye.
So it's four to one, it fails.
Resolution two thousand sixteen, one sixty is a resolution extending a moratorium on the acceptance of all zoning regula-, related applications for review and consideration by the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, the Zoning Advisory Board, the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the Clayton County Department of Community Development as they relate to existing or proposed properties within all zoning districts within Clayton County to be in effect through and including November eighteenth, two thousand sixteen, or earlier, to adopt an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved in second. Are there any questions?
I do. When are we going to get the zoning rewrite completed? Or some draft? I saw the Excel spreadsheet that you sent to us, Mr. Hancock.
Mm-hmm.
But what, what about a drafted document that we can go in and redline? Are we at that stage?
Not quite. Uh, I think from the, the plan of the group is, that's been meeting, is that, I think there's another meeting that is scheduled in about a week or ten days to bring back the ideas from that group to, um, to the, to the group that's been meeting, the individual ideas. Uh, and at that point in time, the actual document, I think, will start falling into shape. Or try, what they've been trying to do is identify those areas that need to be fixed from the prior ordinance, and also the new changes that may need to be made because of changes within the, within the, the area, new districts that need to be added or things like that. So I, I hope that the answer to your question is that within about thirty days, there would be a document for you to start looking at.
Who's advising us on this?
You, we, we have a group of people. Uh, the collaborative firm is involved in it. They were involved in the writing of the last one of them. The Central Services Department, uh, excuse me, not Central Service, Community Development Department. Uh, a lawyer from my firm who does zoning work. That, that is a part of, I think, that, I'm trying to think, that's, that's the group that has met.
Okay, so I'm a layperson at zoning.
Sure.
I understand what I'd like to see, but I'm not an expert in what it, what the terminology is and how it should be.
Sure.
No one's contacted me about what I want District Three to look like, or given me some advice about how we can, um, change the trajectory of the county in line with what we've been doing for economic development and what we, our vision is for the county. Is that going to happen?
It will.
Okay.
It will. And, and I think that the, the reason that hasn't happened in your particular instance is that there was a wait to, to get your successor in line, in hopes that maybe both of you could meet.
I have to wait on my successor, so I'm still here.
I understand. No, I mean, you were certainly gonna be a part of it, but, but we were hoping to be able to get multiple inputs into that.
I will invite her to the table.
Okay.
Let me say this, I, you know, believe that the moratorium is serving a, uh, valid reason for us to, to hold off. But at the same time, I think we're stopping or slowing down businesses from developing here in Clayton County. And as Mr. Jefferson has said, that it seems like we're closed for business, uh, realistically. In lieu of ninety days, could that be done any sooner?
I, I think, Mr. Chairman, we'll know, we'll have a better feel for that in thirty days, and that's why it says, or earlier, I mean, you can always terminate it. And, and we had had some limited discussions just recently, and, and are gonna do some research on whether or not there is a way that we can limit this moratorium that will protect you from the things that may get changed, but also open up some other methods by which some things could move forward as well. That, we're, we're, we've been asked to look at that, and we'll have a, we'll have a recommendation at the next meeting with regard to that, if there's a way we can come up to do that at, at the next meeting of this board.
Well, that's what I, I would like to personally see, is the way that we can all open up some other avenues where business can continue.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, do you know that this is a moratorium on rezoning, and that we've updated our zoning map multiple times over the last decade, and that nothing is stopping any business from doing anything they want within the current zoning categories that this board itself has updated in the last couple of years? So we're open for business, except for rezoning.
It's a perception. Not, I agree with you.
I don't know who-
But as we talk about it, I think some, 'cause I've heard from some business owners.
And, and Mr. Chair, I, I'd like to also say, too, that, you know, I mean, we, we need to get it right. One of the examples that I cite is when we did a zoning moratorium, we did the overlay district on Highway forty-two. You know, when I came in office, there were plans for extended stay, you know, a lot of different, turning houses into nail shops. We stopped it with the moratorium, and we redid it, and we did the overlay district. Now, I would hate to think what Highway forty-two would be had we not done that. So I just feel like we, we need to do it right. And again, yeah, we're, we're definitely open for business, and I don't think businesses are gonna turn away because we're trying to, you know, get this county right, even with some of the, the housing. Unfortunately, we had to go on and let a developer, um, build a house over on Forest Parkway because he came in under some old rules that were like a twenty-five, fifty-foot setback. And, and, and it's, we know what that's just gonna bring. We, I mean, we know what it's just gonna present in the building. It's just a terrible building. I, I don't think we should rush this.
Well, I agree with you that it needs to be done right, but at the same time, uh, we need to be moving on it expeditiously. But done right, I, I agree, I agree.
Yes, sir. I'll pass that message on to the committee that we, that our instructions from you are to make it as quick, happen as quick as we can.
But done right.
But done right. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions? Here or none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. It's unanimous.
Thank you, sir. We do need an executive session, Mr. Chairman, for, oh, two litigation matters. Litigation, excuse me, one personnel matter.
All right. Item number nineteen is a recommendation for Director of Parks and Recreation position.
All right, Mr. Stanford. Basically, just explain to the board.
Yes, Chairman, Board of Commissioners, Chairman asked me to bring context to the, the process that we've gone through as force of Parks and Recreation Director selection. The Human Resources received fifty-nine employment applications for the Director of Parks and Recreation. Of the fifty-nine applications received, twenty-seven were certified as eligible to compete for the position based on minimum qualifications. The positions were posted from February twenty-second, twenty sixteen, to May seventeen, twenty sixteen. Um, applications, again, received was fifty-nine, twenty-seven certified with thirty-two that did not meet the minimum qualifications. Part of that process, the, we had a panel discussion, or had a panel interview that consisted of seven candidates. Of the seven candidates, there were three that were recommended to the Board of Commissioners for consideration to be interviewed at the May second executive session for the Board of Commissioners. Those three candidates were Mr. Troy Hodges, Mr. Romondo Davidson, and Ms. Nicole Horn. So we want to provide context about how we came to bringing forth the recommendation for the board to discuss the Parks and Recreation Director.
Okay, thank you, and I had him, had this item added on the board, on the agenda rather, for the board to decide if they wanted to move forward. So with that, I will entertain a motion for many of the board members.
I have a, I'd like to make a motion to hold the recommendation for the Director of Parks and Rec.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Probably moved in second. Those, any other discussion on it? Those in favor, aye.
I have, well, I have a question, if it's not too late.
I think it's too late. We don't take a vote. But I'll allow it. What's your question?
Well, um, I'll hold. I, I vote to hold with y'all, sure.
It's unanimous.
Item number twenty is to accept a streetlight petition addition to existing streetlight district, Peachtree Landing in District One. This is Vice Chairman Gregory's district.
So move, Mr. Chair? Second?
Probably moved in second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous.
Item number twenty-one is an appointment to the Zoning Advisory Group to fill the expiring term of Friendon Norwood. The term is three years, expiring on August nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. I would like to nominate Mr. Keith Parker for this position.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Probably moved in second. Those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed. It's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this does conclude this evening's agenda. There was a request to go into executive session on litigation and personnel.
Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Uh, second, it probably moved in second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening. All right, motion to reconvene.
Second.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Mr. Hancock.
Mr. Chairman, the board had previously authorized the settlement of the case of Jeffrey R. Davis and Heather Davis plaintiffs in Clayton County as an intervenor plaintiff versus Quality Carriers, Inc., Quality Carriers of Georgia, Inc., Ronald Lynn Brown, and Zurich American Insurance Company. The county had made a subrogation claim of their workers' comp benefits that were paid to Mr. Davis as a result of injuries he received in an automobile wreck. Uh, and the approval was to settle that for ten thousand dollars. I have a settlement agreement reflecting that, and we'll need your signature, but we'd like the board to put that on the record, that you're willing to accept that sum to settle this claim.
All right, is there a motion?
I move that we settle the claim for that amount.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Probably move in second. Any questions on the item? Here or none, those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed. It's unanimous.
And you had also previously authorized us to settle a case of, um, Karbia, K-A-R-B-E-A, Madam Clerk, N-U-A-H-N, uh, claim against the county involving an automobile collision for nineteen thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, we have that settlement agreement and release signed by, uh, the injured party. It does not require the county's signature. We merely want to put it on the record, the authority to settle that case for that amount.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any questions? Here or none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous.
Thank you. That's all I have, sir.
All right, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to appeal the Department of Audits and Accounts and the State Auditor's twenty-fifteen one-hundred percent statewide equalized adjusted school property tax digest report for Clayton County, which was, which was received on July twenty-ninth, twenty sixteen, by the Clayton County Board of Tax Assessors, and to authorize the Board of Tax Assessors and/or the chief appraiser to work with the staff attorney's office to prepare and submit said appeal. to work with the staff attorney's office to prepare and submit said appeal, and attend all necessary hearings, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Probably moved in second, any questions? Here or none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Motion to adjourn.
Oh, there we go.
Second.
Second.
Probably moved in second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.